Good evening and welcome to the work session of Stafford County Board at 6:00 PM. We are meeting at North Stafford High School this evening. Is there, if everybody could go around, first we'll start with those in the room and then we'll go.
On my microphone?
And then to our next, Ms. Randall, can you start us and go around?
Sure. Susan Randall, George Washington District. Emma Young, Darlington District. Patricia Healy, Rockdale District. Elizabeth Warner, Lucas Wildwater District. Hollenhazard, Hartwood District.
Dan Jones, Superintendent Superintendent.
Ms. Hollerback, are you on there?
Irene Hollerback, Acquahia District.
Excellent, and Dr. Chase has had a family thing that he may matter to take care of this evening. So there are six of us in attendance. Is there a move to approve the agenda for the work session?
Move seconded.
The move been seconded, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our sole subject for tonight is to talk about our FY22 budget priorities. As we had discussed at the last meeting, we were trying to make sure that we set forth some, what I would call the sides of the riverbank to help guide our superintendent and staff when putting forth recommendations and the budget for FY22. And to get those started, this, any time though that the board puts forth its recommendations and its priorities, we are always open to emergency needs or things that identify themselves as we get closer to budget. In this particular school year, we sort of, I think, are even more open to the flexibility that may be needed. However, I believe that we are starting this document with our goals and just some long-term planning. So I am going to turn it over to Dr. Warner, but I just wanted to give some broad comments.
Well, one of the things about our budget priorities is they're kind of built off of last year's budget priorities for FY21. Since weeks after we passed a budget, we were reconfiguring the budget. Some problems that we had addressed about teacher salaries and raises and trying to become more competitive with surrounding communities like Prince William where we tend to lose mentor teachers. We have now again fallen a little bit further behind. So one of the things that we've talked about is focusing on the per pupil expenditure as a basis for our budget. Unfortunately, eighty-four percent of that budget is already accounted for in budgets and salaries and benefits. So that only leaves us a small sliver of it that goes to everything else. But the salaries being such a big component in it, trying to achieve those raises means that, you know, we're asking for fairly substantial increase in that PPE right off the bat. One of the things we would like to do by, if we could move Stafford's PPE towards the median and towards the state averages, it would have helped us establish a new step system that would be comparable to what the county has already implemented for county employees and for public safety officers. Move service sector employees towards the median of their pay scale. We did finally achieve the minimum last year. Increase hiring to try to eliminate teachers. We have about fifty teachers with workloads of about a hundred and fifty students, more than a hundred and fifty students. It would be nice to be able to eliminate those stipends and to decrease those workloads. We'd also, one of the items that we've discussed as far as retention and hiring are both increasing tuition assistance for those teachers trying to get a master's degree and also trying to establish maybe student loan support for our teachers that are educated at Virginia universities. I think those type of incentives tend to build a sense of community to increase our investment in professional development. I think that one thing that COVID has taught us is that many of our teachers are learning new skills all the time. One of the second items on here is to a multi-tiered student remediation program. One of the problems that we're going to have coming back to school, we get our kids back, is that we're going to have to do assessments and figure out where the needs are. We can't accurately predict those at this moment, but we know that they're going to be there. The other part of this is that we can anticipate for at least the next two years, we will probably have to still maintain COVID mitigation strategies. The third item is to implement a continuous and adequate funding mechanism for our three-hour projects. This is a growing list of maintenance on our aging infrastructure that seems to get longer faster than we can take things off the list. One of the things, you know, currently the county gives us a flat rate of 1.45 million. I think establishing it and keying it as a percentage of either the tax revenues, the tax base, or of our budget might be a more equitable way of trying to work on this three-hour list. And then finally, of this multi, we need a multi-year funding strategy that really reflects the growth in the community, our need for new schools, new buildings, and the way that we have had to be much more adaptable in the modern era to provide education for our students. So these were, I think, you know, based on discussions that we've had in meetings and in staff, and so I look forward to your input. Thank you.
Are there any comments, any major additions or?
I have a question about what she had said about stipends.
Yeah?
I didn't catch that whole thing. You said something about eliminating stipends and raising.
No, 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 no. There's, we have a group of teachers with about fifty stipends in the last budget cycle that are teaching an excess load of over a hundred and fifty students. This stipend was not paid out by any new school business, so I'd like to see if we can't start working to eliminate the need for that stipend by helping to just staff. It's something I think that Ms. Randall was also talking about.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Could I ask a question about that?
Isn't a stipend required by the state law? Because it's over a hundred and fifty, so whether anybody else does it or not, we're doing it because, you know, it's necessary and it recognizes that they're carrying a heavier load than they would normally be.
I wouldn't disagree with the stipend. I just disagree that we put that load out there anyway.
I just wanted to clarify. I mean, to say nobody else does it, I want to make sure it's.
Oh, I appreciate, not appreciate necessarily.
The only flexibility you have is setting the rate of the stipend. They says you have to give something, but it doesn't tell you what you give.
You know, I appreciate Ms. Healy pointing that out. I didn't intend to imply that it was something unique. It's just unique to us from the standpoint that most schools don't have these teachers who are overburdened with a hundred and fifty students or more, or more than a hundred and fifty students. So I just, teaching that number of students as a person who's got it is not always a lot of fun and it does create an extra workload that's often difficult to manage.
Ms. Young?
So I need some clarification. I know we just talked about stipend. I don't see, what number is the stipend on?
It's under one, it's one of the bullet points.
Okay. And so is that for some and not for all?
This, this, this one stipend, we would like to try to hire enough staff so that we no longer require to have it and we no longer have teachers with that extra burden.
I'm sorry, explain that.
We're not talking about the stipends that we give for other extra activities and sports and things like that. We're not talking about that. This is one that was required by the state to pay for teachers who are teaching over a hundred and fifty students.
Okay.
Some counties have it so that their teachers are not teaching. We do still have teachers teaching over a hundred and fifty students.
But I thought we talked about a stipend and didn't we not give some of?
They are giving, they are giving, we're just saying, we want to, we want to take away the need to pay this stipend by fixing the problem. And the problem is, we've given these teachers too many kids. Exactly, exactly.
All right, and then in terms of the whole budget priority, did we, are we planning on sitting down like we did last year and compare it against last year to see what we completed or not? Because I don't see a lot of the things that we discussed, like do they just go poop in the air?
Well, unfortunately, last year's budget priorities didn't, a lot of them didn't get accomplished, so we have.
But that's the whole point, the year before they didn't get accomplished either, so we kind of moved them over and talked through them and see which one, because they were important last year and the year before. So we need to look at those and say, why is this no longer valid? Or this is something that we no longer need? Or now that we're in this, this period, we need to concentrate on different priorities. I mean, we, you know.
In your packet, there is last year's budget priorities are there. One of them was develop a multi-year plan through annual increases to the public schools' per pupil expenditure. So that one, we did not complete and we have continued it on this year's budget plan with a little more specificity. The second one was to fund across-the-board salary increases with additional target increases to alleviate compression in salaries, which is another goal that we were unable to complete even though we had put it in the original budget. So we had intended to try and meet that one, to reduce the compression in the scale and to increase.
Okay, so my question is more, I got you, and this is just this discussion, right? My question is really about, were we going to discuss why we pulled them out? Or did we just pull them out and say, you know, the fab decided, but they didn't come to us and say? I mean, I know you all came with the new ones and say, this is what the priorities are now. But saying that these are the ones, we took them out, you know, we took these out and they're no longer valid because FY2, I mean, they're, they're just gone. So you know what I'm saying? Like, I'm just looking at new priorities altogether, but.
I think these priorities are still carried over in the budget priorities. I think all of them are. The only real addition is the COVID-related one and then the funding mechanism for the three hours. And I think that the multi-year funding strategy kind of is addressed in all of them.
It would be nice if we had aligned, you know, like aligned them with the ones, because it was kind of confusing. But thank you, thanks for the clarification.
And if I could maybe just offer something? So in late January, I'll present my proposed budget to the school board. And starting November and December, we'll meet with a lot of staff to help formulate that budget. And to go to both points, we will continue on last year's goals. And you are correct, we did develop a plan, we weren't able to implement it. So we're going to probably do some modifications of that plan, but still we'll have a plan like that. And two and three will absolutely be more detailed out, but will be part of the budget proposal. So I guess what I'm telling you, it's not going to get lost, this won't be lost.
And sort of like how I started saying is this is talking the big pictures of things that are important to us. And to me, I think per pupil expenditure has become something that's very important to us. Just the additional investment would allow, and I think that was taken from last year's budget presentation that Dr. Kizner presented to us. We can change what's in there because we're going to see what the needs are, but I don't think there's any disagreement that, you know, competitiveness and teacher salary. But I think the addition in several of these, talking about three-year goals of meeting the state average. I mean, if we don't start saying, you know, we are, we are off the state average fifteen point five, seven percent, okay, the non-math here, three years, then that's like five percent. Now, I know that's still a moving target, but I think it's also a, how can we begin to partner and start adopting targeted goals over a multi-year budget cycles to meet some of these? Because some of these, we are not going to meet in one year. I mean, I would love to, okay, I would love to, but I have lived here for a little while. But I do think going and presenting saying, this is what it would take over a multi-year, and so I'm just saying that to you and to Mr. Palmer. I would love for that to be part of even your presentation. Certainly, we are talking about next year's budget, but can we start? By end, I know we're not to buy into your budget, I know we're not there, but Chris, I know you're probably going, oh my gosh. But I do think at some point, as a large organization, we're going to need to start looking at that in general. But Dr. K, you and I talked about.
And one thing that we would like to eventually add to the conversation, and Chris actually has the information tonight, if you think it's appropriate to distribute. So I'm anticipating that the county administrator and his staff are going to present at the three-on-three meeting a different way to look at per pupil expenditure. And one of those ways is looking at the local share. And even then, because we have all that data for you, and remember, we don't make the data. We just list it from the same report everybody else does. We're still below the state average and we're still below the median, but our ranking looks better. So I'm actually really glad it's worded the way you worded and not the ranking, because the rankings change and that, I think, sometimes gets people a little defensive. And then the other thing we did was compare to the school divisions that they use for comparisons, especially when they were looking at the public safety salaries. So, you know, if you, again, maybe not tonight, but it might be something at the future fab meeting. We want to flush out a little bit, I mean, we have it if you want it, if you want it. But it might just help drive the conversation more to what the locality controls than what the state controls.
Okay. I think to Ms. Young's point as well, I, I think, you know, these are goals that we keep fighting for year to year. I think to develop a strategy that's more long-term, I think, benefits us because now we're asking our funding body more specifically for what we need and trying to target it toward what other localities are doing. And I think that it gives us a stronger argument.
And the other thing that we are prepared, if you wanted, it's obviously your decision, but another thing that also brings, is brought up a lot, and we actually briefly talked about it at the last fab meeting, is the cost to compete. And we did some research since the last fab meeting to help again understand that, yeah, would that your money help? Absolutely. But I think there's an impression that these school systems are getting that much more money and that that's driving the salary differential from Stafford. And the honest reality, it's not. So you take a place like Fairfax, there you go, got a $2 billion budget, they get $35,000 in cost to compete.
Thirty-five million. Million, he's a thousand.
How much?
Thirty-five million.
Oh, they get thirty-five million. That's why we get thirty, yeah, we wouldn't have this stuff.
Millions, thousands, it's all the same.
Prince William gets thirty million. Arlington gets, which shocked me, they get less than five million, what do they get?
Three point two.
Three point two million. So Arlington has a $700 million budget. They have less kids than we do. So my point is, I'm not just, we get what, two? What do we get?
Two point six.
We get two point six. It's all part of the basic aid. So when I called a couple of superintendents, some of them didn't even know what they get because it's not like they get a separate amount that must go to salary and benefit. But Chris did his research and checked, you know, the official list. So again, I'm not suggesting we don't want a hundred percent, but I'm also suggesting, and we get, we did the analysis, that's not what, that is not what's separating us from Prince William, if we just wanted you, Prince William as an example. Their budget is over a billion dollars, so.
Nobody gets a hundred, I think the life is like seventy-five, right?
No, a hundred.
Who gets a hundred?
It gets, every bunch is the northern. There's the northern.
I mean, Stanford, Spalzavina, and then we get twenty-five.
People get a hundred, it'd be twenty-five. Three, I'd get twenty-five, rest of me.
Well, we have that too.
I think yours too.
Yeah, so all of, this is, this is shows what each, what value it is and it's really just raw and it just shows, it shows the divisions they did it and how much they get per year. And this was actually came directly from the state. Surprisingly, they, it's very hard to calculate it if you're not with the state and they did provide it to us. So you'll see, and I, hindsight, I probably should have added maybe of what their ADM was next to it too, so you could see like on a per student basis. But as Dr. Kizner mentioned, you'll see where Prince William's at, thirty point seven. Loudon is right above them at twenty-one million. And Stafford is just two point six. And so I'll point out, it costs Prince William about thirteen million dollars to do a one percent raise. I checked with their staff. And so taking that thirteen million into that thirty million, you're looking at maybe two point four percent that they can give in a raise, and that's recurring dollars. It's not like every year they're giving another two point four that's funded by COCA. So, but if you look at their teacher scale compared to ours, it ranges anywhere from ten to like sixty percent over our equivalent step. The average is about thirty-nine percent over all of our teacher scale steps to their equivalent step. So we're not, that, their COCA is not causing them to be thirty-nine percent higher than our teacher scale. Is the story that I'm trying to tell there.
Yes, I'm sorry. When we were at the fab, we talked about these items, but we didn't get into the specificity. And I just wanted to note that I'm not going to be able to support this three-year plan to get to the state average. I think it's not at all realistic, even if we weren't in these COVID times. This statistic says it's fifteen point seven percent below the state average. But when I look at our numbers on here and then the state average, and I look at it in another way and say, how much would we have to increase what we have now to get to the state average? I come to just below nineteen percent. I mean, this is an accurate statistic, but there's another way to look at it. And the difference between fifteen point seven and, you know, almost nineteen is quite a bit. And then looking at the documents that are attached here, which thank you for sending them, in Dr. Kizner's presentation from last January, it says, if Stafford County were to reach the state average, the division would have an additional fifty-five million, six hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred fifty-seven. So is that how much we would need, you know, as of last year to reach the state average? If that's an accurate figure, then that's based on last year and we all know it'll also be increased. So that means that we would be setting a goal to have an additional just under fifty-six million dollars in three years. And I just, I don't think that's at all practical to have as a goal. I do very much like the number four, develop a multi-year funding strategy. And not just to address growth challenges, but to address the division's needs. Because we have needs that are not necessarily related to growth challenges. Some of those are, you know, here the three Rs and other things. So I, you know, my personal goal would be to come up with a funding strategy that the schools could depend on a certain percentage of the income from the revenues from the county and then we could do our planning. And this was something that years ago, we actually negotiated and had a signed memorandum of understanding with the board supervisors. But that was a year before an election and then once the election took place, the new incoming board just nixed it, you know, in the beginning of the year, so we never ended up with that funding strategy. But it's something we've talked about for a long, long time.
Thank you. Yeah, can we have Chris go ahead and pass out that other document? I kind of think it, you know, like Ms. Healy said, this may be a larger stretch, but if Chris has the more updated version of the information regarding, you know, per pupil expenditure and what our local does, I think that might help us.
I mean, if you have accurate data on what we need to get to that, not in terms of percentages, but in terms of actual dollars, that would help me. Because I just, you know, I can't even think about fifty-six million.
I appreciate your comment. Our, to get to your goal number one, if you remember last year, we had a four-year plan to get to, to complete that salary compression sale. But we're not going to be able to do it without additional followers.
Yes.
Do you want Dr. Warner to put?
She took hers off, so I took mine off.
No, I'm. I was just, I took mine off.
That's okay.
It's difficult when you're speaking, but.
Well, when you have glasses on, it falls off. It is.
What is that, the mask that doesn't fog your glasses?
Well, the thing is, people are making masks like crazy, but they're not making it for the right material.
They're not making it for people with glasses and stuff.
That's true.
Well, I have a number of pretty ones, but these are easier to breathe.
Yeah.
If you twist the ear loop, it will fall down and you can see them.
But you know, John had these, they're like either fast or anything, they're really big potential.
Since, since it looks like we want to talk more about number one, let's, let me do it, let me do it kind of fast. Let's start at number four. It seemed like developing the multi-year funding strategy to address growth challenges and other needs. And.
Well, I'm going to say a multi-year funding strategy. To enhance the planning.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to make sure, so we, I would ask if we, while we're going through this, I don't mind, because like, I would like to cross off the ones that we have moved and aligned into this new one. So is there a way that somebody could tell me from the fab, which ones was aligned when you're speaking of it? You know what I mean? Just so I could take my own notes on that. I mean, I could look, but I don't want to assume anything.
Number four is a new item on priorities.
New item, okay.
Okay, and I would just like to note that at the last meeting, Dr. Warner said that the fab didn't, specifically did not come up with priorities to recommend it because it was a task that we felt the whole board should engage in, so.
We tried to create a framework.
But I don't want to come up with new ones that I thought were important back then. If this is what you all have decided, I'm going with this framework.
We haven't decided anything, that's the point I'm trying to make.
But you have them on paper.
For discussion.
For discussion, so we're going with these first and if, once we're done, and whatever we pull from here that are now new here, then we don't have to worry about those anymore. And then the ones that are left over that I thought were important, if they're no longer important, then I won't bring them off. That's all. I was just trying to make them align. I know we have one hour.
Okay, check hour left. Thirty-one minutes.
Okay. I, you know, I think that it is important that we start looking at our multi-year strategy because it's not like the school budget is a new item that comes up on the board supervisor's agenda every year. They know that this is the necessary way. They know that we have changing needs and we have growing student population. We have other stressors, especially after COVID, we may have additional, we may have additional social emotional needs, additional, you know, we may need different, different investments in, in the schools. But I think that having a multi-year strategy also helps kind of mitigate some of that arguing. I think it helps us both plan better for our future needs. So I like item four, I think it's, I think it's a useful one, just because I think it does try to start to delve into more of a long-term strategy.
So what is the, so here we have, you know, a strategy, funding, develop a multi-year funding strategy. What is the framework that we're looking like, from what's the lens like? What else are we planning? What's the dollar, what, three-year, first year you want to obtain this, second year this, third year? What, what does it look like?
So I know you asked a question to fab, but I do, I want to tie it to the book that you're reading. Because what the book will tell you is that if you look at things as finite, then it's a terrible way to sell your point. If we're looks, if we're just trying to get to the average or the median, that's not going to excite. If we're looks, if we're just trying to get to the average or the median, that's not going to excite people. If the reason we want to increase our budget, because we want to accomplish the following.
You need, you need to run with something and the board supervisor wants something.
Is that your other goals begin to get to what you want to, you want to increase staff salaries? You want to provide more support for students? You want to take care of your capital infrastructure? I mean, that is what really is going to, I think, engage the board supervisors and the public of what you're trying to accomplish. The objective of getting to the average and median, we understand that, but that's the fine, that's like, I'm a ten and four football team, I want to beat the Giants, I got to win this week, and then I could be eleven and four. No, it's a win-loss situation. So I, I'm, I think your point is going well taken, but I think in many ways, you've kind of answered it with the other goals. At least you started the answer, because still add more things to it. But to get to what you're trying to accomplish, especially the teacher scale, and again, I want to remind you, last year's budget proposal never said we were going to get there in one year. I think we said four years was the objective.
And so that's good conversation right there, Dr. Kizner. This is what I'm talking about. Here we have reexamining current, you know, delivery models, this and that. But you added all that list. At some point in time, you, Chris needs to tell us in the first year, this is what it's going to take, second year or third year. Because the board supervisor, it's only nice, the community wants a year that, but the board supervisor wants to know how much it's going to cost. So at some point in time, we need to get to that.
And that will be definitely part of our budget presentation.
Okay.
This is the guiding document.
So repeat what you just said, so we could write it down. So now we have less than thirty one minutes, so.
So basically, you want a multi, so I think that should probably be the first item then, is to develop a multi-year strategy, so that the Stanford County Public Schools can accomplish our goals. And then.
Which includes blah, 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 you just mentioned it, so somebody's going to, let's just go write those down.
Right.
Okay, good.
So that would become item one. And then the other items kind of fall into that, just because they focus on more specifics, like creating a new step system, the salary, removing the compression in the teacher's scale, offering incentives for our employees that may be outside of salary benefits, but maybe.
So, so four becomes one, and one falls into four's framework, we're saying, right? That's going to be the detail.
So, so maybe the first one is an overarching goal. For me, we're making it too difficult. Because if, I, I think that Dr. Kizner and Chris are going to take what we have, and they're going to come forward with the money. If you don't know right now that we are concerned about teacher compensation, which I don't think either you are going, oh, my gosh, never heard that from the board. I think that this year though, with COVID and other things, there's going to have to be flexibility with this budget going forward. And I think how I view this document is it's kind of putting our state down of saying, we know we are behind in several areas, we know we are growing, we know that we have aging infrastructure. Not a, not a problem uncommon in other areas of government, let's just be honest. And trying to start with, what I think would be awesome to get out of this is a discussion with the board supervisors of how are we going to partner in multi, multi-year funding strategies? And it's got to align with theirs, because they were already trying to establish a budget plan when they did the board supervisors. So if we can do the same thing, it would benefit us.
But you know what? Okay, and then I'll sit on my feet and on my hands for a minute. So I'm going with what you're saying right now in terms of my thought process. We could develop a two-year plan, a three-year plan, a five-year plan, and things are not going to go the way we think it's going to go. And so the flexibility comes in, we know we are in COVID. We need to take all of that into consideration. We know when we're coming out of it, what we're looking at. We're staring at behavioral health, social work, nursing, all ventilation, all of that stuff coming down the pipe. And so the story needs to be, we, while all that is going on, we still need to help these students that need more help coming in because they're behind. So I personally think, yeah, you could have a three-year plan, but the focus needs to be in the first year. All the work that needs to be done, we could, we can't assume we know what's going to happen. We just know, based on some of the surveys that you're taking or questionnaires, you could kind of tell that the community and parents are going to be needing some more help from us in trying to help their kids.
Yeah, and you're going to, you're going to see next Tuesday, you just stated very correctly, in our preliminary survey results, the social, emotional, the academic progress. This is from staff and stu-, uh, staff and students. This is from staff and parents, teachers and parents. So you, you're going to have a good amount, but not complete amount next Tuesday.
Well, I think that's why we put item two on this list, which is also a new item. Because that one did focus specifically on COVID relief, and I think it's got to be probably for two years. We're probably going to be dealing with the aftermath of COVID and extra mitigation processes for two years. So I think this, so I think this one.
Yeah, and we have to look at it a different way. I mean, there's going to be continuous where I believe that we need to continue to have some kind of a hybrid model, where there are going to be parents that are going to continue to want to get home, not because they want to, but because they are, you know, their immune system is weak or whatever the case may be. So we need to prepare for that, that's one. But two, we, I've mentioned this many times, but it's, I don't know if it's following on deaf ears or not, but we need to engage with other schools, for example, to come up with a, a process that we could be giving our teachers and students testing. It's going to come to that. I mean, we're not thinking about it now, but you know, the things that I talked about six months ago, they're coming into fruition. When I talked about a pilot program, where we are with a pilot. But in general, we have to start thinking about testing our teachers and free, giving them these testing free. And I know parents don't want to hear this, but kids also at some point in time.
Is that up for a budget plan?
And it's COVID, yeah.
Okay, so that could come within the COVID. If we could get back to the framework, because I'm afraid we're getting really into these details that are, was not the purpose of tonight's meeting, as I, as I understand it, and let me come home.
You're correct. So I, I also agree that, you know, in the, in the fact that when we have done like CIP, and it's always a, you know, five-year plan, and then you see things come off of it and go on it. I think similarly with the budget, you could, it's okay to put out a framework that extends out the years, knowing that year one is the one that we're going to present and focus on. But if we have the silhouette of what's to come out in front of us, that's fine. It will, we're flexible enough that we can change. You know, the thing that I think tonight we need to finish completing is making sure we have a framework under, with the understanding that outline years matter as well. We would like for that to be in the thought, in the site. And then, you know, finalize this to a point where we get what, we put out there what we want as goals, and it gives direction for Dr. Kizner and Chris, I mean, we're not talking dollars here today, gives us, you know, a budget that kind of speaks to that.
Well, let me ask a question, and then I'll be quiet. Could we possibly do this multi-year funding strategy and then have the bullet point of the specifics that everybody's interested in in terms of, instead of all of these, call it something? Like make it simple where it is one, it's a strategy, one, with the full framework, with the specifics that you're interested in. And instead of four, it's one big framework that says COVID. And the details are the details, but like right now, it's just going to say COVID, it's going to say this, it's going to say whatever. And then, you know, you could.
But COVID is not on topic.
I understand, I just use that as, oh, you could call it whatever, I don't know. You could call it, because two and four, they're both saying, like Ms. Healy mentioned, you have, you save multi-year student remediation. It's, it's a strategy for part of the student. But, you know, I, I will, I will be quiet about it, and you all just, let me know what you all want me to put on.
I think that the overarching goals are that we want a long-term strategy. And then I think that the individual goals for this fiscal year twenty two are things like getting the teacher salary and compensation fixed, implementing COVID protocols, and having a flexible spending plan to address COVID-specific issues in the school. And then I think also as part of this is trying to establish some plan for funding our three-year project. And I think those details are what Dr. Kizner and Chris and his chairman will pull up. But I think overall, I'm not sure that we're, is there anything on the list that everybody, anybody specifically disagrees with? Aside from Ms. Healy and.
I do just want to add one other thing. You know, just to be a little cautious about keep saying COVID, COVID, because remember, pre-COVID, you adopted a budget with what counselors and nurses, social workers, tiered instructional support, we've been on that journey for the last couple of years. My cautionary note is that I believe one day COVID is going to be gone. And then I don't want to say, well, you said this was all COVID.
It's going to be a fluke.
Well, my point is like, these are, we had kids struggling, and we had staff not being paid the way they should. We've had infrastructure issues prior to March of two thousand and twenty. So I do think that what is important is when we put a budget proposal to you, we explain to you at least a twelve months worth of these, July one to June thirtieth of twenty, whatever, of, you know, twenty one, twenty two, actually, to say, we're going to need more of this, and this is the, this is our justification for it, for COVID. But I just want to remind you, you guys have been great the last few years, and I'm sure prior to that, of adding psychologists and counselors and everything.
Well, I think the second item, not just addressing COVID, but it's also equity issues. And it's got to give us a little bit more flexibility as far as being able to respond more quickly to specific issues that come up as they come up.
But the other thing I think this speaks to too, and it's still kind of even, you know, talks about in the per people expenditure, is part of our remediation could vary, and I say it simply, but I know it is not simple, is class sizes. I mean, this could vary, part of remediation may be that we are just bringing down class sizes so teachers have more opportunity to reach more kids individually. So, I mean, we've talked about it with the per people expenditure. I don't think any of these are unrelated to each other. I think they do build upon each other, which then I think lends itself for it to build for a multi-year opportunity.
I'd like to just raise another question. And if at some point there is an answer to my question about, are we going to need fifty six million to get up to where the state average was last year? If we can, I don't know if we have an answer tonight, and I'm just, I think that's what Chris just told us. Well, I'm looking at what he gave us. Well, oh, just now, I'm talking. Well, but this is, this is fifty six million, so I don't understand, I can't, I can't relate.
That's FY nineteen data? What was, what was in our budget goal last year was based on FY eighteen data.
So, so we went from needing fifty six million to twenty to thirty million? That's pretty good, if that's all we would need, the difference.
So you're trying to get to what number?
I don't know.
We don't know what number two.
I, I'm trying to look, I'm trying to look at the budget priorities that we're stating here and putting around dollar figure with it. So if it, whether it's thirty million or fifty six million, to me, it's still. The value is very high. But I have a question in that regard.
No.
This says create a new step system with salary increases, et cetera. Several years ago, and Chris, I, I think you were here at the time, it was determined by the superintendent that the step system was no longer feasible. There had been many years that went by that even though we had a step system, we couldn't afford to give steps. And the employees understandably felt that they were being, for lack of a better word, shortchanged because they weren't getting the steps. So the superintendent's recommendation was that we do away with this, and then they came up with the, you know, the other category. So are you recommending that we go back to a step system and, and I assume is this question?
Well, I would just say.
But let me just finish my question for you. The question is, is this something that is going to be sustainable? And what has changed since it was not sustainable to today that, that makes it, you know, practical to have as a goal? That, that's, and you don't have to answer this evening, but to me, that, that is a, a very important question. Because I don't want to get in a position like we were years ago, where we had a step system, but there weren't, there wasn't enough money to give the steps. People came in expecting they were going to get the step increases every year. And for, for, you know, many, many years, we didn't give any at all. So that's the one question. And the other question is, how much, how much would it take in terms of dollars? And I'm fine with using last year's dollars, because I don't think there's going to be that much of a change to get to that, that median. Because I'm, when I look at this, fifty six million, it just boggles my mind to even think that, you know, I would ask for sixty, fifty six million dollars in a three-year period.
Okay, so just two quick, quick responses, but I'll give a much more elaborate response another day. I'm not going to question other superintendents. The decision brought forward at that time, I'll just say was the correct decision. I will say that the data many years later would suggest it's not the right decision today. I would also say that I have looked at, this is my twenty-second year, and I've looked at a lot of different salary structures, so I'm not going this with a blind statement. The step system seems to be the system that school systems follow that have the best salaries for their employees. It's the will of the board, as you set a goal, that you have to fund it, okay? And last year, we presented you a step system that you did agree. We couldn't fund it at the end because of, you know, what happened. But so it's only, anything is going to be sustainable only, which goes back into your goal number one, if the funding is there to support it, okay? And, you know, the state average was seventy one million behind, and the state median was thirty six million behind, based on the sheet that Chris just distributed to everyone. So we're not unrealistic, that's not happening in a one year. May not happen in two years, may not happen in three years. But the point being is, if you don't set a goal, it's never going to happen. And, and I go back to what I stated this a few minutes ago. We have to explain what we're trying to accomplish. That will get us closer to a meeting to go. Just so we'd say we want to be the average and median, without telling a story, is not going to be effective. And eighty-five percent of our budget, like pretty much everybody else, is salary and benefits. So that's why we're trying to get out per people spending, of course, that's how we get funded in schools, by per child. I mean, it's a formula that's taken out of our hands. What Chris did present in this one to help disaggregate this a little bit more and maybe get into a healthier conversation where we're not finger pointing, is really just take a five-year look and also look at the local. Okay, so the county, I think, gets somewhat taken back when we go with the ranking. And fine, we don't have to get into the ranking, but the ranking is done by the state, not by us. But if you look at two thousand and sixteen, the local rank was sixty one. And then if you go to two thousand and nineteen, it's, it's seventy one. And there's a hundred and thirty-three school systems, so you can see that we're still below the average. So again, maybe, you know, there's different, and then, just so you know, the school systems that are on this sheet is the school systems they use for comparison purposes. So we wanted to make sure we're all using the same language. So that's why these school systems were selected. So if you just bring yourself to Prince William County, another important thing to note is your local composite index. The lower the amount, the greater you get from the state, that's the best way to put it. The lower your amount, it basically goes from point two to point eight. So a very wealthy school system, by the formula, say in Arlington, for every dollar that they spend on a required standard of quality, okay? And most budgets are about seventy percent standard of quality, about thirty percent above standard quality, okay? So for every dollar they spend, they would get twenty cents from the state. And they, okay, that's how you look at it. And so for Stafford, us at three, at, um, at, uh, point three-four, we would get approximately sixty-six or sixty-five cents, um, from the state. So, um, so if you go back to, if you go down to Prince William, of course, again, we're pretty consistent using Prince William and Spotsia as our comparison, even though they use larger, we use those two. You could see their composite indexes are very competitive to ours. They're very aligned to where we are. And then if you just go all the way down to two thousand and nineteen, you could again see that Spotsylvania, their local rank is thirty-three, ours is seventy-one. Prince William local rank is forty-six, ours is seventy-one. So, you know, there's many ways of looking at it. But I think this is just informational. You gotta go back to what we're trying to accomplish, okay? Um, and and that's why we we present this to you.
So did, I just wanted to see, was that the answer to my question? It would take seventy-one million?
Yes, so this.
More in income for us to get to the state average?
Say that.
You mentioned seventy-one, there's seventy-one million behind the state average. So that would be the amount we would need to add to our budget, we would stay at seventy-one million dollars. So if I put that into this goal, that would say, establish a three-year goal of meeting the state average, which today would be adding seventy-one million dollars to the goal. Okay, I just wanted to know what I'm.
Yeah, so what we're saying, we're saying that the state, the state per pupil average, state per pupil expenditure average per child is, um, eleven thousand, a state average is twelve thousand nine hundred thirty-one, ours is ten thousand five hundred and eight. So it would take two thousand, uh, four hundred, I'm just making life easy, two thousand four hundred dollars to get per child, okay? That's not happening overnight, we understand that. The other problem is, as we're doing this, we're making, we potentially could make an assumption that nobody else is adding to their budget. So Prince William actually gave pretty good raises last year to their teachers. So we're, you know, we, we, what did they give? They gave, um, a step and.
And a one or two percent or something. I don't remember.
And remember, our teachers' average was one point one or one point two percent and pretty much nobody else got anything else. So as we're trying to remain competitive and, um, you know, that's why I think you need to have a commitment that we're gonna work towards something. And but I know that number sounds overwhelming, but I would just ask you respectfully to look at other school systems and what their total budget is and what it would really take to to even get, if we just got the, um, thirty-six million dollars to go median and you look down this list that Chris presented you, it's not, it's it's a big bite because we're making up for many years. That's the problem, you're making up for many years. So when you make up for many years, it's a big bite. But if you look at the other school systems on either one of these lists, it truly isn't a huge amount.
And we also keep slipping further away in the ranking, making that goal harder to obtain. So so the fact that it it looks overwhelming, it's really only eight hundred dollars a student over three years. So we increase the eight hundred dollars a student next year, and the next year, and the next year. You've reached your twenty-four hundred and you've moved towards the state average. I think it's just when we start looking at the number as a unit, like seventy-one million dollars does seem.
Unattainable.
Unattainable, it's huge. But it's a thirty thousand student school district. And we keep slipping further behind, so the goal becomes more expensive to 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 achieve. I think that we have to set a goal for our board of supervisors because if we don't give them some idea where we're trying to go and why we're trying to get there, then we're never gonna get there because they're always going to be defining for us what that number should be.
I think it's kind of like what Holly has kind of pulled us over and over, it's telling the story.
Right.
This is where we've been, this is where we wanna go. Now, we can change how that strategy looks. But, and I don't say, you know, we need to eat seventy-one million. I mean, I don't care what that number is, I don't care what the year, I, well, I kinda like the year to be closer. But we can, we can do that and just telling our story of what our needs are and what those needs are gonna help us fulfill. Because getting better, I I just don't want to, uh, sell ourselves short in saying, well, this is realistic. I wanna be a little unrealistic because it's kind of like, you know, two for the stars and you land on the moon kind of thing. I just wanna go, just go for it because we don't know what's gonna happen. I mean, they could say no, they could. Or they could say, we can't do this, but we can do this this year and maybe next year we'll do it a different way. I mean, I just feel like we have to, we have to do better, so let's set a, set a standard of better. Because if we keep doing what we've always done, we're gonna keep getting what we've always gotten and that's not enough, not anymore.
And I don't disagree.
I know you don't.
My, my disagreement is in coming up with this.
Seventy, a big thing.
Seventy-one million. And you didn't say eight, eight and eight, but it's eight. And then the next year is that eight plus another eight, and then it's the eight plus eight plus eight. So it's not just a blood eight because it adds to the value. So it is much more complex. I just.
I agree.
I'm, I'm just trying to be practical.
Sure.
And the reason, this is, this is kind of ironic because you mentioned the book and what it says. And that was, that was my complaint last year when we were just saying we want more money. And I said, well, why do we want more money?
Yeah.
We need to say why we want money. So I'm glad to hear you say that that's what people says. I didn't even look at the book last year.
And remember, a big part of of this seventy-one or thirty-six comes from the state. Don't, don't feel like we're saying that thirty-six million is all made up by the local contribution. Most of our budget is from the state. So last year, I forget what they gave us, fourteen, fifteen, I forget.
Are they an increase?
And before they took away, but.
You're talking about the state or the?
State.
We ended up with fourteen point four million from the state.
Yeah, so I I just wanna remind us, when you look at the number, there's a partnership with this and that partnership is the state budget. So if we go with the thirty-six and let's assume fifteen to make life easier, if we did it over three years, if the state gives us fifteen million more each year, you're getting there. The problem lies again is, it's not a static number. Other school systems are also getting more from the state. So we have to give you almost a multiple progression formula to anticipate what other locales are getting. But I still think the more effective strategy is saying what we're trying to accomplish. Because I really believe there's gonna be more agreement around that conversation than trying to get to either the average or the median. I think that will become a natural thing that will eventually happen. That's my hope.
I think that's why you lead with this. And maybe the description is to increase, um, our per pupil expenditure amount by two thousand dollars over a multi-year, um, whatever. And I understand that we can be saying, but others are moving. But if we still got up two thousand dollars in two or three years, it would have an impact. I mean, because the hardest thing to keep saying is that the target keeps moving. So maybe we pick something really like the twenty-four hundred, you know, um, of of an, of an increase of the per pupil expenditure is is a goal. And some of that increase would help us also accomplish some of the other things that are, I, because I kind of feel like two, three, and four can also be funded if number one was accomplished. Yeah, some of that. I, I think we have to have a goal though. We have to have a number that says, we are trying to increase our per pupil, per pupil expenditure twenty-four hundred dollars over the next three or four years. I think it's a realistic goal. I think it's a way of saying, we have to start, because most of that money is for the one thing that we haven't been able to do, which is teacher compensation.
What we could do, I'm just thinking out loud, you see this in other places. Board of supervisors uses that, I think, also. We could make a dollar bill design. And let's go with the twenty dollars, whatever number. And say, I'm making these numbers up, forty dollars will go to salary and benefits, twenty-six dollars will go for personnel to address the following needs, eighteen dollars will go for infrastructure, whatever. So they could see a visual presentation of, and portrayal of what the increase will go to.
And 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 I, no problem with that. I think, I, you know, I'm just not hearing that we're really in any disagreement about what these overall goals are. I think a lot of it is just the details of of how much money we need to target to ask for. And I think that's, I think where everybody's having a difficult time. I think moving towards the state average would be ideal. However, I also recognize that that's going to the, the board of supervisors and saying, okay, over the next three years, we want additional seventy-one million dollars is probably gonna be, you know, not something they wanna hear. So I think that, you know, we have to have a goal or we're never gonna get there. If we don't set a goal, they're gonna constantly define for us what our goal is. And I I I just think that we need to, we need to be proactive around saying, this is what we want. And I recognize what you're saying, that's a practicality issue. So what should our goal be? If we wanna define it, what should it be?
That's a good question. Um, I'm just looking at this math and the reason I'm using my phone is for the capital I. From sixteen to nineteen, it looks like we increased by four percent over those three different years. If I, if I take the difference between ten thousand one thirty and ten thousand five oh eight, and I'm looking at the local, um, the, the local, the total, the total cost per pupil. So that would be a four percent and and Chris, check behind me, please.
Sure.
Um, approximately four percent increase in three years. So if we say we want to to increase by two thousand dollars over the next three years, that would be an approximate twenty percent increase, which is five times what we've increased over the past two years. So so that, I, I mean, I'm just, but even though we're increasing, our ranking keeps slipping.
Well, but that's a different issue. I mean, if you wanna say you wanna get your ranking up, that's something else. But if you're, if you're talking about, you know, what percent, what you wanna ask for, what percentage. And and I, I agree, you know, a goal is a goal and 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 we should strive for it. And it, it, it should be something like a reach, you know, the, the high school counselors say, pick a reach school for college and one you know you're gonna get to and then have, have one that you, you really like to get into but you're not that sure you're gonna get there. But but I just, and and this is just me. And last year, I voted against the budget because I didn't like just saying we wanted more money. I couldn't support that. I like this approach, but I, I, I am not comfortable with talking about a twenty percent increase because even though we are funded half a little more than half of the state, if we're talking about an increase, we can't depend on what we're getting from the state. So that means it's gonna have to come from the local county. And I, I, I just can't even think about asking for fifty, sixty, seventy million-dollar increases.
Okay, what if we ask?
For each year, and it'll be an ongoing increase.
Well, I think, I think then if we argue it, you know, that way, and I think, you know, you'll have to kind of pull together. I mean, if you really wanted to make the goal, I would put as the sub-bullet for the local per pupil expenditure to go back to twenty seventeen, that's four hundred bucks a student increase. Now, Mr. Fulmer, isn't that, isn't it correct in twenty eighteen? When we gave one of the biggest raises we've given to our employees, is that correct?
Uh.
Wasn't it twenty eighteen?
It would have actually been fiscal year twenty nineteen.
Okay, it would have been considered twenty nineteen. So even with that big increase, the per pupil, the local per pupil went up about seventy bucks.
Was that the same year we had to give up, teachers had to contribute five percent to D R F?
No, but this is the year that the state funded the large portion of that.
So that's what I'm saying, is if we really wanna focus on the thing we can really ask our local body for, then we focus on the local per pupil. I mean, if we're really gonna have to say.
And I agree, because otherwise, we have no control. We have no control locally of what we get from the state.
I mean, Mr. Fulmer, I know we wanna go higher, but four hundred and, okay, I'm just gonna say four hundred dollars. A four hundred dollar increase from our local funding body to go back to the twenty seventeen levels would be a start. I know you're gonna be able to chis them up at over there on what that would mean. I mean, I think that the, I think the broad number one is is to, um, raise per pupil expenditures to a level competitive with surrounding communities and establishing multi-year goals of meeting state averages and mediums. And then we can put under there as a bullet instead, focus on going back to the twenty seventeen local funding. That's one thing that we can ask the board of supervisors because at one point in their budget, it looks like it was forty-six, eight and three. And we are now at forty-two ninety. That's not really the direction I would prefer to see the local spending go.
And and I could support multi-year. My problem is three years. Three years is gonna fly by. And we're talking about that many millions of dollars. I, I, I just, I, I don't think there's any way. And the farther apart you are from, you know, what's realistic, the, I think the less likelihood you're going to be able to to get closer to it. That's just my personal feeling. Because if I ask for, I ask for seventy million, I may get, just no.
So the aim shot is a target to get the per pupil expenditure on a local level to what it was in two thousand seventeen and built on that over the next three years, trying to move our county towards the state average. Would that be, it makes sense, oh boy?
For me, and and just, you can just put me aside because I'm gonna be, you know, I, I, I can support multi-year because multi-year is broad and it's not three. I think anytime you're talking about three years and whether it's fifty-six, seventy, whatever dollars, million dollars, I, I just can't, I can't get there. Um, that's, that's just me, so.
But why, why don't we just say that, multi-year for the first year, combine what, um, Chairwoman Healy, um, Chairwoman, as it said, which is the first, first year to meet the twenty seventeen, whatever that amount is. Four thousand, uh, six hundred eighty-three. And and that is clear because we're not there. And then maybe put for the next year right after that. I don't know, like two years. Because this year is up and coming and it's gone, so if they could get at least of that. Um, I have a question.
I mean, locally, we're going backwards.
Yeah, I have a question. Are you under the impression that that the money, uh, that us being number one is solely depending on?
No.
The, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
No, I just think that if you, if you look at both the expenditure and the ranking, we're moving in the wrong direction.
Well, no, when you say the rank, the money and the ranking, I don't want us to say that the money is of correlation or dependent on us getting to the first ranking.
No, it's not.
But there's so many variables.
There's so many variables there. But I think certainly adequate funding helps us improve. And because it helps us meet some of these needs.
Right, by breaking it down.
Right.
On the things that we might need. I think that's a story that we, so we need to tell.
I do think part of your messaging, because this could happen, is that as they're working towards meeting the local increase, that there's an understanding not to decrease the state increase. And I'll give you an example where they would have. that there's an understanding not to decrease the state increase. And I'll give you an example where they would have, or they always would have the option. But the option becomes more pronounced on the new salary structures that the General Assembly has been doing the last few years, that you only get this money if you contribute X amount of money locally. And that would be a way for them to say, you know, I, I haven't seen that since I've been here and, but I, I have watched other school systems go through that where, um, this board of school, board of supervisors, city council won't give the amount to make the match. So then the teacher's salary, it has to come one hundred percent out of the, the current school board budget, or it doesn't happen at all.
So could we just go through these and maybe, um, just have a, 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 a vote maybe per item and see if we can't get to some certification? You have a straw poll, you can have a vote.
Straw poll. So, um, so do we all agree that we want to increase the, we, we still want to list it as an increase in the per pupil expenditure with a goal, we can even say a multi-year goal of reaching the state average. It doesn't have to be a three-year goal, but just a multi-year goal of meeting the state average. And emphasizing that maybe the first year, we want to at least go back to what the two thousand, three thousand seventeen levels were.
I, I would be more comfortable calling it a multi-year ask as opposed to putting a definitive timeframe on it. Just me personally.
I, I, I think multi-year is fine. Um, and then the next item is the, um, multi-tier student remediation program. What about the, are you going to eliminate these things underneath?
Well, I think that these- I, I would prefer to, what do you like? Well, the thing about this step is, I mean, I'm, I would need more information on this step as to what's different now from when it was eliminated before. You know, I, I mean, and, and there may be, there may be a lot that's different now, but I would not want to put the school system in a position where we put a step system in that was not sustainable.
Okay, so do we just want to say, um, impose salary increases or institute salary increases for all licensed staff? I think, I, I actually think the bullets that we had, these were taken from last year's budget. I would prefer to give Dr. Kuzner and first some latitude to bring to us the best way to spend the dollars based on this year's, right? Circumstances. I was trying to come up with the right word. It's like, as I said it earlier, it's not like you don't have any idea of some of the areas that we want to address.
Oh, yeah.
And I think if we make ours too specific here, even though I, I like, I think our part of the budget is where we need to do that because we got to get behind whatever you all come up with. You may come up with something, I don't want to say brand new, but something that ends up being a priority that we may not, um, have thought, but I think making it just a broad. Okay, so just, it's increase per student expenditures to a level competitive with surrounding communities, establish a multi-year goal of meeting the state average.
And truthfully, I'm just going to be upfront with you. You have a salary step scale. You have a salary step scale. The day I arrived, you just keep pushing the end. I, I don't really understand why you think you don't have a salary step scale. What we're doing is condensing the current salary step scale. So somebody who's on thirty-nine years just goes to forty years in the current one. You know, we, you just keep moving up. If you get, if you come from a, a, another school system, we look at your years of experience, we, and put you on the salary scale. So I'm just telling you, I, I don't really, I think the difference that we're providing you, and this has become obviously a greater need as the sal, as teacher recruitment and retain, retention is, is more competitive, is to move us where you don't, where we do say, there's a point in time, you get to the top much faster than you currently are getting. Okay? And, uh, right now, what we just do is we keep pushing it and extending it. So maybe I'm missing something, but I don't think I really am. You do have a salary step scale, but it doesn't have an end.
I thought that's what a market, um, scale is versus the step.
Yeah, you, 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 we hire somebody from, uh, Foxville County, they have eight years. We put, we, we look at where you would be on eight years.
But I think there's, I think there's a lot of taboo in, in just the word step. We, we went so many years without giving our teachers a step increase because of budgetary constraints. Um, I think keeping it and calling it a market-based system, um, takes away some of the, um, the expectation that there's going to be a salary increase every year based on what the step scale says. So it could be semantics, but I would, I would suggest we stay away from the term step scale.
Well, I'm just going to add, Dr. Kuzner is right. We still, we basically have a step scale system now. We call it a years of experience scale. So it's still zero through forty years of experience and, and you're going to move up because, but the scale would move with you if we don't give a true step increase or depending on what the raises are that year. The reason we went back to calling it this step system, part of the reason we did away with it is because we couldn't get the local funding to maintain those steps. But, and in the county, um, I'll just say probably had heartburn about that seven or eight years ago about, hey, we can't guarantee you that you're going to get two and a half million dollars each year to do a step increase. But what the county did just do was in this past budget cycle, adopted a step scale system for public safety and moved them up a step in the process.
Employees as well, right?
What's that?
And county employees.
Not all county, just, they adopted this for the public safety. And so for us, all our non-teacher scale employees would stay on our uniform scale, which is like a payman. But our licensed employees would go on a step scale, years of experience. Ultimately, the goal is, is to make it a more competitive scale. And because right now it's not, we're far behind everybody except Spotsylvania. And in some areas, Spotsylvania is ahead of us. And so we need to advance our scale, whether it's years of experience, experience scale or a step scale, the structure of the scale will be identical.
My next question, is the public safety scale thirty steps or more?
I believe it's around thirty. It's not, it's not much more. In fact, it might be less.
Yeah, but my, my understanding is a market, a market scale ideally is about thirty steps because you're not going to have an employee that comes for forty years. Typically, an employee going to want to give you at the top of scaling does in thirty years.
And what is the percentage difference, um, between the steps and the county scale now for public safety? There used to be an average of two point four or five percent. I remember that.
So what the public safety did is, um, it's three percent up to the midpoint and then it's two and a half percent. I'm almost positive. It might just be two percent, but I think it's three percent and then it goes to two and a half percent.
And how many employees does it affect?
I'm going to tell you a number and it's going to be wrong. I can get back to you on that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious because it's not all the county employees.
Correct. It's just their public safety, which would be their, their fire, rescue, sheriff's office employees.
And, and this, this is all anecdotal. Last night I was invited to speak to or participate with the Mary Washington Teacher Alumni Association. And they had a lot of teachers who graduated the last three years talk about where they're teaching. The shift is they're going, it used to be Stafford's boxy. Many of them, well, actually everyone that spoke yesterday are north of us because the salary difference. And I could tell you, I, I constantly talk about George Mason because I'm pretty close with that dean and we, we have this conversation all the time. Everybody's teaching, college of education has seen a reduction of, of students. And we know, Chris and I were talking about how many teachers have signed up for tomorrow night? Well, how many employees have signed up for tomorrow's night VRS if you're planning to retire? Well, it's significant. So as we're worrying about COVID, we should also be worrying about what the market is looking at. Okay? So, you know, we, what we did a few years ago, I'll start saying that. You, you did the right thing. I'm not questioning it. But it's a new time and there's a new, um, there's new factors that we have to address. And I'm anticipating, um, we talked about, there's already been a teacher shortage. But, uh, what I'm hearing and last night and then to find out how many people signed up for this VRS thing tomorrow, we're going to see potentially a, a, a pretty significant exit, which means we have to-
This is just a question for me, um, Madam Chair. It's just a question. How does moving it from calling it market back to step and implementing this step compared against the board of supervisors that have the control of their money? How are we planning on ensuring that we can actually provide our employees with the stuff that we are saying that they're going to get? If we don't, don't have that money in the budget? Are we going to drop Peter to play Paul?
Well, you, you can never guarantee it. Uh, but back to the county just implemented this and said, hey, we're going to give you a step increase every year. Now it's subject to budget. Um, but they gave one last year in anticipation that maybe they would give it again when this budget year rolls around. And from my perspective, I want to look at teachers and say, hey, if you can do that for public safety, you might only have five hundred public safety employees. But if you're saying that the market shows that they should be on a step scale because every other public safety, um, excuse me, every other county has put their public safety on a step scale. Well, every other school division, except a very small number, have a step scale system across the state of Virginia. And if, if they're willing to, to, to find the funds and do it for the public safety, then let's do the same thing for our teachers and keep up with. Because right now, we're not even keeping up with anybody else. We're falling farther and farther behind every year.
And, and, and you gave a step increase last year. You, you gave, it, it became a priority. We didn't want people to fall back another year. It wasn't a lot of money, but they, I'm sure they appreciated the average was it one point one?
One point one percent for teachers.
It ended up being one point one. Obviously, we were going for a, a, a greater raise. So I would like to believe that between one and two percent, if you really see this as a priority to get our salaries competitive, you'll have it for the step increase. You'll have it. Because if you don't, then you're always going to fall further and further behind. And the gap with the other school systems are going to constantly grow. So I think it's the will. I, I, I respectfully, unless there's a major recession and everybody's losing money and the state's not giving us money, I think it's what the board's priorities would be. And you could fund, of a three hundred and thirty million dollar budget, you could fund, um, what was, what did it come out in real dollars, if you had to remember?
For what?
The one point one percent.
Uh, ac- across the board or just for?
Just for the teachers. No one else got it.
Uh, it's about one and a half, one point four million, I think.
Yeah. If, if you, if we can't find one point four, two million dollars out of a three hundred plus million for our staff, then we shouldn't even have this conversation. And that's how I feel because at this point, we got to take care of our people with the organization.
Saying that we're not taking care of the people, with all due respect, I understand that eighty-four percent of the operating budget, you know, is for, for staff. And we're going to find it. But changing the names, it is not going to, and, and changing the name from whatever you want it, the market, the staff or whatever, it is not going to bring the money if the money is not there. But I'm saying, yes, we want to do exactly that. We want to pay our staff. We're, we're talking semantics like, um, Miss Healy and, um, Ms. Hauback.
Mark might be a little bit more misleading because the market-
We're just going back and forth. I'm just saying.
We can't compete with the market.
And, and let me know.
And we, and we need to put numbers with this. I mean, just to say a new step system, the, I'm thinking the, the old step system was two point four or five percent every year for everybody. That's what was not sustainable and that's what we didn't give them.
They should say one point one.
So if you're talking about another one, let's put some dollars, come back to us with some dollars.
That's what we did.
I think those things would be in the budget. I think, I think we all agree that the salaries have to be competitive with local markets. We have to be competitive, especially as we're entering a new teacher shortage. So I think whatever the competitive salary is, I think that's going to be defined with the budget. I think the fact that we all agree essentially that, that we need to establish what it is. And you're right, it does have to be, and we can put the term in there. We can say is, you know, increase salaries for all licensed staff and to be competitive with surrounding communities and, um-
Adding there minimally one point five or whatever, yeah.
Well, that was this year. Now, we may come up with another number, but my point being is, we, I don't want to lose sight. We have a three hundred and thirty million dollar budget.
Right.
And if it comes out to one point five, it comes out to three million, then we're going to give you different scenarios. Because we did give you different scenarios last year, if you remember. And we landed on honestly the lowest one, I think.
What is the lowest that we ever have given our staff? I mean, you could always say minimum was zero.
There were many years where it was zero.
That's, that's why we, we had to abolish the step system. It was not affordable. And the employees felt shortchanged. They thought that they were promised this step, which certainly you can understand when you come in and you see this, this step scale and it has, you know, two point four or five percent increases every year, then there is a reasonable expectation, although no board can commit to the next board. And ultimately, it's a matter of what funding is available to us. So I would say for purposes of this evening, if we can just, focus on the, the bold print priorities and then come back to these other ones because
well, I, I think so.
We really are not in a position to-
I think the bullet points are things that are going to be more clearly defined in the budget. Because I think those things are going to have to be a little bit more flexible in order for the numbers to be able to, to work.
And, and just to agree, uh, to support what everybody's saying, some school systems, I'm not going to say it's misleading, but it is somewhat misleading. So they'll give a four percent raise, let's just say. But what they're really, if you break, what their real message is, we're giving you one point four step and a two point six, uh, increase, where we'll give a four percent raise or whatever. It's a straight raise. So it's how we want to break up that raise. Also, you see that, Chris and I always talk about is like, this school system is giving four percent, but their worded is we're giving you one point eight percent step increase and a two point two percent raise. And we're doing the same thing, but our folks don't feel like they're getting a step increase. And so that, so it becomes that issue. And really what they want to see is I'm moving up the scale. I don't want, if I had nine years' experience this year, next year I'm getting paid over ten years. And then, so we're, we're going to come back in January with a lot of different, uh, things we do.
Well, I, I think that was last year, we had a smorgasbord of options to try to determine what was the best way to, to do this. So I think that we can just all agree that salary increases are going to be an imperative issue in the, in the budget. And I think it's a huge chunk of our budget.
Eighty-four percent. Or it's eighty-four percent of operating.
Yeah. So, I mean, and it's, and if we need to increase salaries for our licensed staff, it's a huge chunk of that, that funding. Um, I think-
Let's not forget the unlicensed.
Well, that's why-
Who barely made it to the-
Well, that's why we, the next bug is moving the service sector employees who just finally got to the minimum and we could start moving them towards the median.
But are we, are, are we dealing with these bullets tonight? Are we dealing with the overarching?
Well, I think we're trying to kind of do a little bit of both. I think the overarching thing, I think we, for number one, we've kind of worked out. I think number four, we've got, we're, the fourth one, we've worked out. I'm going to reorder these and, and for the, where we need next week. But I think the bullet, the bullets explain why we want to do these things. And I think the bullets are going to be part of the overall budget. I don't know that we can get into specific numbers at this point because we're just giving direction. And that's all we're doing. Because everything else is going to get hung on this from the, with the super budgeting.
Yeah, and that's another important thing. The state, so yesterday, five general assembly members, all high-ranking in the money committees, both parties, Democrat and Republican, talked about what they're going to be proposing. And they absolutely all are proposing to have salary increases for teachers. And then of course, the governor will present his budget in December. So that's another factor that, you know, this is very helpful for me and Chris and, and Stan as we put the budget together. But there's also that big unknown, which is about fifty-five percent of our budget is from the state. They are a senior partner of our budget.
So the, the second item is the, um, student remediation. And we could call this an equity, you know, this category could- And we could call this an equity, you know, this category could be much broader because we're trying to figure out, we have unknown expenses that, that we know are going to be coming up as a result of COVID, but also as a result of, you know, the equity issues that have been exacerbated by, by this, this crisis. I, I do think though, mentioning COVID in this one, because we're talking about our next budget cycle. There's going to be some immediate results there. I think we needed to, I think we could change the justification FY '22 and beyond to give sort of a, an idea, this isn't the only year. But I do think there's maybe some specific things for '22 that are going to come. And I, I don't think that it means we're not addressing other needs. But I do think this is the year we, we can make that argument. Right. As potentially emergency, whatever we want to call it.
But should we just take that word out?
Well, you could, you could call it learning laws.
Because, because COVID exists, but even after COVID, if we get a vaccine and, you know, we, we get, you know, all of that stuff taken care of, this continues, as I stated earlier, that we are always going to have that gap and it's going to continue to grow because of the economy. So we need to take that into consideration versus just calling it COVID.
Well, I think.
We had, we get COVID money, you know.
But I guess you're real COVID.
But that CARES money is also restricted, we have to spend it by a certain time and there's restrictions on what we can use it for.
I'm just saying that putting it in here, we're limiting ourselves.
But if we are, this is just the FY '22 budget. So, so we may have to add to that. We may have to take it, say, we now in FY '23, we, we may have better, more specific goals that we can identify. Right now, we don't know, we, we don't know what we're going to do.
Okay, I'm just saying, this is how I would like to see something, but it doesn't, I'm, I'm out. But I'm just saying that COVID should be aligned because COVID is now.
Right.
But this should be something now and ongoing because this is going to continue.
Right, and I'll just give you a real example where I think this is COVID-related additional staffing. As we move to hybrid eventually with the middle of high school and all the elementary, we now lose drivers who, and we lose cafeteria staff and others to distribute the meals. Because we're still going to, if COVID is still like it is today, we're still going to have virtual learning. So we're already seeing, you got the email yesterday about how we have to ship people to, you know, to the Middleton High School to give out the meals. So we know eventually the staff that we've, who've done a great job the first eight or nine weeks, now they're going back to their primary job. But we still want to make sure kids are being fed. We want to make sure that operation doesn't go away, but we're going to need staff to do that. That's an example where I could quickly tie a COVID addition to the budget.
I'm just saying it should be a bullet, just like you had, you know, all these bullets, but, you know.
Yeah.
Make it, make it a little bit more general that we could use it as a priority going forward. And, you know, if things work out, that we could still use that one item for the next. We're talking multi, multi-year strategy here.
Right, and, and I agree and I think that there will be, but I think that's why adding equity to this is another way of saying, okay, we have COVID issues, but we know that these are ongoing, we have ongoing equity issues. There are also going to be multi-year as part of this strategy. So I think these bullet points just need to be a little bit more specific. So we have COVID and feeding students and remediation and ventilation systems and air purifiers and, and all the other things that go along with some of the ventilation systems we can't even do anything with because we haven't assessed what we need, you know, because the time constraints of spending the CARES money didn't really match up with, with trying to fix those problems. So we can add bullets to this, but I think number two, I think is important because I think we have all these, we're going to have expenses that we can't yet determine. And we're going to have expenses just in mitigation strategies that we're going to have to maintain for at least the next year. You know, masks and hand sanitizer and feed cleaning and all those other things. So I think that, I think this is, number two is balanced. So is there any other changes that need to go in there?
Just one small suggestion, rather than say that need to be addressed when schools return to normal operations, I would suggest we say as schools return to normal operation. Because I think that gives you a wider period.
Yes.
When may be much farther down the road, but as we're, we're going to be continuing in that road to as we return. I would think that that's where we're headed. But, but I think.
And after flexibility. Yeah. So as we return to school, I mean, after we return. Okay. Should we add professional development in that section?
I'm looking at somewhere else.
Professional development is in section one, is part of our overall. I mean, professional development, I think, is an ongoing thing regardless of.
Yeah, but I was talking about.
We're definitely going to have in our budget proposal, professional development along with tuition assistance in other areas. We have a, we have a number, but that number won't be finalized until I meet with all the principals and others to get, learn more of their needs. We have a central office number, which is a good start, but I'd really like to include others to hear what they're saying at their level that they need to afford it.
I was talking about it within the.
Just.
That's fine if it's.
No, but I like it. You're investing in staff, which is a.
Yeah, I was just throwing that as an idea. I mean. So we're down to three instead of four now, right? Am I understanding that correctly? We condensed it, we're now three, not four.
Condensed, yeah.
Okay.
And then the third one is to. Four was moved to one. And then all the other bullet points kind of follow up.
Yeah, oh, okay. I thought you were saying you eliminated a bullet point. So I can now.
And then the third, the third item on this list is the adequate funding for the three-year project to try to establish percentage of either the tax revenues or our budget. So we have not only a continuous anticipated amount, but it's dynamic number that changes over time.
So once you're done rewriting it up, would you send it out?
Absolutely.
So that you could look at it and.
Yes. Yes, and this will be on the agenda for next week, right?
Our must and shall person.
Yes.
Well, it sounds like if you're moving four up to one, then once the former one, two and three are all going to be subsidiary.
Correct.
Yes.
And that's.
Your one goal is to develop a multi-year funding.
Correct, and that's what I was talking about.
I can 100% support that. I think that serves us and the county and the community well.
Yeah.
If we could, if we can accomplish that.
And that's what I was talking about earlier when I said.
And yes, with the other times with the umbrella and everything else. So you have one goal.
Correct.
And these others are.
You know what? Thank you, Jesus.
Your common agreement, is this all good?
But it's fine, I'm, I'm good with it. I mean, you both move it. I think the per people expenditure is the big one, to me. But look, I'm fine with you all switching it.
But is that part of the?
There's part of.
If it's a multi-year funding.
Then. Four people will vote.
Not every one of you going to another room, I heard.
No, 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 that is the priority.
That's how you can accomplish this.
It is the priority, yeah.
Chairwoman. The strategy.
I think it will be added to it, a multi-year funding strategy to address different kind of public school needs and moving us towards the state average for per people expenditures. And then one is to increase.
I know. I have to see it written.
Yeah, I'm going to rewrite it. I'll send it out. I'll rewrite it, it'll be sent to everybody. It'll be good. So I think, I think, are we good on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Check with Irene, Irene, we good?
Are we good, Irene?
I'm good, I'm good. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
My, my dog was crying, so I had him mute the phone so that you didn't hear how pathetic he sounds.
Okay, so we've, we've got a strategy. I will send a hard copy to everybody who are missing this week. And any edits or changes so that we can go on the agenda next week. Okay, all right. So the work session is adjourned. And we will move to the special call.
Oh, what about the, is the BSD matter in there?
The special call, that's a special call.
Oh, we can sit here or no?
You can sit here.
Yeah. But for the BSD. I will be, I will be real quick on this.
Because you wanted something for information so that we could go to the next.
Yeah, I'll be real quick with this one, ladies.
Okay, let's call this special call meeting.
Hold on one second.